Okay, uh, let's call this meeting for the Nottingham Board of Select. Board for Monday, May eighteenth, uh, the time is six thirty-one. Uh, we will start with the approval of the manifests. Um, I don't recall seeing one. Was I missing that? Does that come later?
I think it came early.
Uh, like last week on like the fifth or? I can't get out of this.
I'm looking in my email. If it ever opens up.
Uh, I was thinking of something else. I don't.
Invoices came Friday.
Yeah, I had the invoices.
Yeah, no manifest.
I saw her today, but I guess you guys didn't see it. I'll have to wait.
You do? How'd you see it today, Tyler?
I was in the office. I had to stop by the office.
Uh, can we just do accounts payable then, and then? I never come across this in my time, so I'll need a little guidance on how we, uh?
If you don't, if you don't have them, uh, don't, don't approve them. Wait till you see them.
Just defer.
Right, that's what I'm asking, right.
That's not going to hold up payroll or anything, is it?
No.
Okay.
So we'll refer that to, uh, the next meeting, I take it?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
No problem. Uh, can we approve the payroll, though?
If you saw it.
Well, yeah, it was just right there. We're just looking at it. The accounts payable. Did everybody get to see that?
No.
The one of five fifteen, uh, oh, I've got his invoices, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's invoices.
All right, we'll move it on to, uh, uh, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of May fifth, two thousand twenty, both public and non-public.
May fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Tony will second that, but it was May fourth.
What did I say?
Fifth.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So we have a, um, a second on that?
Yep.
A roll call, please.
Uh, I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
I, Tyler Eden.
I, John Warren. Most of your passes for nothing. Uh, we'll go to reports now from assigned boards and committees. Uh, we know budget committee is not doing anything. Uh, we know CIP shouldn't be doing anything. Um, Tyler, uh, planning board?
Yep, had planning board, uh, Wednesday night. And they had three, uh, different cases. And, um, the, uh, all of the, uh, applications have been approved. We'll see what happened, but nothing major. It went good. And the case, uh, one of the, uh, cases is continued to June tenth, so it'll be a public hearing.
Are they doing those over Zoom, too?
I believe so. Must have changes between now and then, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But like last week was on Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was, that was the first one I had been on with them.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Joanna was, um, I was working with Joanna to make sure that she could get them scheduled correctly, so she's.
All they were, I mean, there was, uh, I think one of the hearings was Eversource just came in because they're doing some tree trimming on some scenic roads.
Yep.
And then, um, had a lot line adjustments. And subdivision, uh, off of Mitchell Road.
So there's no, uh, new subdivisions or big ones coming in, or were there any talk like that?
Well, I don't know, the one in, uh, the, uh, subdivision on Mitchell Road is a fourteen lot subdivision.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, uh, Donna, is there anything on the Marston?
Yeah, Marston's in great shape, so we're pretty much, um, set where we need to be out there. The, uh, the final grading has been done, the infield mix has been put in. And, um, a lot of, a lot of hours went into it last week. Um, Matt Kacouchis did a fantastic job being out there and just making sure everything got done. Um, the highway department did a great job helping out as well, moving some dirt around, so we are in great shape. And now it's just a matter of sitting and waiting and watching the grass grow. However, Chris, I would like to investigate with you, um, possibility of just putting some signs out there. Just asking people to stay off the field grass.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And then Steve Soref has, uh, did a interview with Courtney and Matt and myself late last week and is putting an article in the forum to, uh, just kind of let everybody know what's going on over there and where we are at. So thank you, Steve, for doing that.
Excellent.
You're welcome. Uh, quick question on that Mitchell Road. Is that the one that's continued or Tyler said?
Yes.
That's to continue to June tenth?
Hold on, just a second. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Tyler, is there anything on the three hundredth?
Uh, looking to get approval to, so they can start doing the, um, hold on, I get in my notes here. Um, their cookbook published. And that should be like within a month, month and a half, it should be ready to go. Looks like it'd be about twelve hundred dollars, um, that they'd have to spend.
How much are they selling the cookbooks for?
I'm not sure.
Okay. They don't need approval for us to spend that money, do they?
Yeah, you've, you've kind of left it with them that, um, you, you, you gave them the okay to go get hats and T-shirts and told me to keep an eye on it. And you typically ask them for a plan and a budget, uh, and they say, yeah, we'll do that, and then they come back and ask for one thing at a time, so. I can, uh, I can keep an eye on twelve hundred bucks for cookbooks if you wish, or we can go back to trying to get a plan and a budget and.
I'd be just more curious on what they're selling the books for and how many books they're buying for twelve hundred bucks.
I, I think Steve said they were thinking maybe ten bucks a piece to sell them for, and they would double their money. Hey. But I don't remember the specifics.
It'll be a bargain at any price.
Oh, I'm sure we'll all own one, but. All right, that's, uh, it for the, uh, committees and boards.
But do, do you want me to, uh, turn them loose, or do you want to, uh, get a visit from them for big picture stuff, or both?
Say that again?
You, you want to see them, or do you want me to just handle these small dollar things, uh?
Isn't that, isn't that what we agreed to, Chris? Didn't we say like five hundred dollars or something?
Yeah, it was, it was hats and T-shirts and hot dogs and hamburgers, um, you know, they're, they're making more than they're spending, so uh, it's not like you're dipping into the fund. If, if you want to use that as the guidepost, and I come back to you if, uh, you want to dip into the funds.
I think that'd be good, just like you said, because they've, they've made the money, so they have, the money's set in there, so make more, so I, I just, you know, even if we bring it up at the meeting, and if they need something, they come to you. If you, if you need something, you let us know, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I was just curious about, you know, the breakdown of how many they were getting for what the cost they were buying. You know? But I'm sure everybody on that committee knows what they're doing, so.
Heard they had some guy that just graduated college. He's an accountant. He's going to do them. Could be expensive.
Yeah.
There you go, Tyler.
All right, so we'll just move on now from there to the, uh, town administrator's report. Chris?
Okay, uh, let's see, everybody's, uh, functioning okay, uh, police and fire have been busy. They had a real busy weekend, um. They had a little lull a few weeks back, but now we're back to at least normal pace of operations. We had one officer in quarantine after a positive case. He has been released from quarantine, is now, well, he's quarantined at home instead of quarantining in a, in a hotel in Portsmouth. Uh, no signs, uh, no symptoms or anything, so so far so good there. We are looking at June first as the next possible uh, date of change in the governor's orders, and, uh, you know, if you've probably been following it, things are ratcheting up slowly. Our best guess at this point is that, um, we can begin to, uh, open things up slowly on June first. Uh, what we're envisioning there is uh, probably appointment-based, uh, visits here to offices in the community center. Be that with the town clerk, tax collector, the supervisors, uh, the assessing, all, all those things. Do that on an appointment basis so that we can limit the flow of people, uh, and then, you know, anybody crowding in here at one time. Uh, and continue to push as much business to electronic methods as we can. Um, town clerk's pretty buried, um, everybody else is pretty stable in here. The, uh, other loosening activities, uh, are going to affect the, let's see, beach. Um, we typically open the beach on Memorial Day, um, weekend. But, um, in talking with, uh, Courtney and Gunner today, uh, we're really nervous about being the only beach on the lake if, uh, if the State Park Beach isn't open. You know, we've, we always have a, a challenge, uh, with uh, folks from out of town being there. Uh, there's going to be enough interest from people in town, I think, to keep the place quite busy. So we're, we're inclined to wait until at least the State Park opens its beach before uh, we open ours. It, it could really get out of hand there. We have, we get a lot of people that, that find it by mistake when they're on their way to Fundy or Round Pond, uh, and, uh, we're, we're really nervous about being the only beach open to the public on the lake. So that's, that's our recommendation at this point is to hold back and until at least the State Park opens their beach. The can, you know, the, the, the park is open, but their beach is not, um, we don't know yet when they will open their beach. And then the second part of our thinking on that is, um, we're, we're really unsure of how to uh, enforce anything in the way of distancing. Um, that will be continued regardless of what the next batch of regulations is. It will undoubtedly include something about distancing, uh, and other behavioral stuff. We don't always have people at the beach. We don't typically have lifeguards there on the weekends, uh, when we don't have camp, uh, we, we don't have people there. Uh, and we're really reluctant to ask our fifteen-year-old lifeguards to be enforcers of those things, so. We're not sure how to handle it, but we're, our, our leaning at this point is to make it available to residents on a use it your own risk kind of basis, uh, as it, as it is now when we don't have any lifeguards there. Put some guidelines up, you know, re- remind people how, what's, uh, what's recommended, but, um, I, I just kind of taking a hands-off approach to it. If, um, if we can't enforce it fully seven days a week, uh, well, it, it seems like too much to try and it's too much to try and enforce, um, with the people that we're going to have. And I'd be interested in your thoughts on that. You know, we, if we have a camp, we'll have some lifeguards on staff. We'll, we'll get to camp in a minute, but, um, we're just, we're, we're unsure about how we'll be able to manage it. Um, Gunner's going to put some thought into what he can do in terms of, uh, enforcing the parking, um, what his schedule will look like. That's going to be bad enough. Um, what happens on the beach after that? And you can imagine all kinds of different expectations people are going to have about public behavior and. So we're not, we're not clear how to handle that, but that's our initial thinking. If you want to steer us any more than that, we're more than, more than.
I, I agree with you, Chris. I think it should be use it your own risk, because that's how it is now. Right? That, that's really no change to our policy of it, so.
No, I think there, there would be, if we had lifeguards there, there would be some expectation among some users that the lifeguards would enforce things that some people think ought to be enforced, and that's, um, that's just too much for a fifteen-year-old kid to do.
I agree.
Can we come up with a larger sign that says residence only?
Yeah, we're going to retool the entire sign package at the, uh, it's actually going to, we're going to cut a lot of the noise out of it and just focus on a few messages and then, uh, do more down at the actual beach.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've already got people parking at the gate now and, and walking in to access trails there or just hang out at the beach. Uh, the demand is going to be there. Parking is going to be your next headache.
Is parking allowed on that stretch of road?
No, but there's a pull-in at the gate, so what, what we've been seeing in the last week or so is people parking in front of the gate, which is.
Yeah.
Now, if, if the gate is open, people won't have to park there. They'll just drive in. But once you get in there, uh, the parking's kind of haphazard, uh, you know, we, we have a, a requirement that you have a town sticker on your car, and we can ticket those that do not, and that's what our approach would generally be. But it's still, if it's, if it's busy, it gets pretty crazy down there from a parking perspective.
Yeah, there's no designated parking areas. It's park wherever you feel like it.
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, my opinion on opening is, I mean, people you know, nowadays should have the, uh, proper respect for each other to keep their social distancing to six feet apart. I know we're dealing with the general, you know, people that don't understand that rule, so. I don't know, I guess it's up to the board on, you know, how long you want to keep it closed, or.
Well, I think, like, you know, like Chris was saying, um, we, at least until the State Park Beach opens, that way we're not shifting the demand in our direction. You know, that's, that's a good benchmark to start with.
What do we do if residents demand that we open it? Just say no?
Yeah, for now, I would say, yeah. I mean, the water's.
Keep the gate locked.
Yeah, keep the gate locked, keep the beach closed. I mean, it, the water's too cold to swim right now anyways, so. I mean, there's, there's some diehards that would absolutely enjoy swimming in, you know, fifty-two degree water, but, uh, I'm not one of them.
I am not one either.
So, Chris, what specifically do you need from us, if anything, on this, at this time?
Well, uh, I guess I, I, I have told you our intention is not to open, uh, before the State Park Beach and, uh, I think not Memorial Day weekend. I'm going to, I'm going to say we're not going to open Memorial Day weekend, unless the board tells us otherwise.
No, I'm fine with that.
I'm, I agree with that approach.
I agree as well.
I agree, but I think that we should, uh, at next board meeting, readdress this situation again.
Yeah.
That we talked about. Just to add that things changed.
The governor talked about it today a little bit, didn't he, about state parks and stuff like that? I mean, but they addressed some of that. I mean, it's, something's coming, so. I just think if we're the only one open Memorial Day weekend, we'll have every person, you know, in Rockham County there, probably.
Yeah, we're, we're expecting something relatively soon, uh, from the governor. Uh, I, I asked the State Park today when they expect to open their beach. I haven't heard back. So, uh, it, it feels like it's, uh, things change on June first when, uh, when the current stay-at-home order lapses. Uh, that is the night of your next meeting would be the first, which is also just, you know, it's the week after Memorial Day, so. Uh, that would be the first time that, uh, we would be ready to come back to you and say, do you want us to open the beach? With those new orders in hand.
Hey, what about, would we also talk about June first, maybe opening the town hall for people?
Yes, um, that, yeah, we, that would be probably an appointment basis, but yes, we, our intention would be if the, if what looks like the governor's guidance is going to hold and things are going to change on June first, then we would, uh, we would open the, the town hall back up for, uh, appointment business and a couple of, um, small group activities. Uh, RAC is, uh, working through the guidance right now and seeing how they can, you know, start doing things like small groups of martial arts or whatever, you know, whatever the the various groups that use the building are. Ten or ten, less than ten people kinds of activities. So that would be the first of our opening steps back up.
Uh, one thing just to quickly address since we're talking about this, uh, on Saturday when I was in signing checks, I was talking to Lori Anderson, uh, obviously the town clerk. Uh, and she says she was getting, uh, behind on a lot of work because of the fact that the place wasn't open or allowing to see people in the amount of time it took on the phone to answer people's questions. Um, is there anything that we could do to assist her, or?
Yeah, I talked with her today. Um, I, I think getting to an appointment system that she didn't have to worry about scheduling all the appointments. She could just respond to them, uh, and be ready, uh, I think, and she agreed, she thought that would help. Um, you know, she's doing a lot of back and forth to the, to the front door right now and handing people license plates and that kind of thing. Uh, if we could streamline that for, it would help. Uh, she's without a deputy, so that's, I think, probably part of the problem, too. Uh, she's doing everything by herself, which is not, uh, something we've had one person do uh, for an extended period of time in a long time, so.
Are there any other of the town hall staffers that we could sort of loan to her for, for help?
Now, the, the, the biggest crush is, uh, motor vehicle stuff.
Oh, okay.
You know, you got to be certified to touch any of that. The, there's plenty of help on the election side. Uh, supervisors can do most of the things a clerk can do uh, for election business, but that's pretty quiet right now.
And on a related note, we have three select board meetings in June, first, fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth. Do we still want to plan on doing this by Zoom for the time being until we see what changes in the pandemic landscape? Yeah, I would kind of lean towards, yeah.
Yeah, if we're still under a, uh, a ten-person limit, say, um, come June first, uh, you know, there, there's five of you and me, they were always there. Wouldn't take long to get to ten after that, so.
Right.
You know, unless we talk about a multi-room arrangement in this building, uh, I don't, I wouldn't expect it. Certainly not June first.
That would be technologically difficult to set up.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and wouldn't be much better than what we're doing right now.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. I'll, I'll continue scheduling them in Zoom for now.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I guess the, the only other thing is, uh, you got a, you got a memo, uh, from Courtney last week about, uh, summer camp. They've been pulling their hair out, trying to follow various guidelines and figure out how to pull off a camp operation. It, it sure feels like right now the, the traditional hundred and twenty kids at the school or even sixty at the school and sixty here. Given the, the state regulated guidance and regulations is just not going to be feasible.
Want me to put that up on the screen?
Uh, no, I, I don't, I don't, you, you all have it, so, um, I, I don't, I don't think that is that helpful, but, um, the, um, it, it's just, the, the regs are just way too much. It's not a, it's not a question of inconvenience. It's, it's just way beyond what is realistic. Um, there, there is another body of regulation supposedly coming, uh, that task force met today. We don't know how fast it'll come, but if, um, if we don't have a sense by your next meeting, June first, that, um, that that is possible, we're, we're going to suggest that we not launch that program for the summer. As much as we hate to do that, uh, there's a lot of people that depend on it. It's, it's just not feasible.
People haven't paid into that program yet, have they?
No, no, this isn't, we haven't, we haven't even opened registration, um, so we have nobody, you know, nobody's waiting on us to send them a check back or anything like that. Um, there are, you know, with a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty kids, there's I don't know, sixty, seventy families, eighty families that depend on it, uh, in town, so it's, it's not something we would drop lightly, and they're going to try and find other ways that they can provide shorter-term programs, uh, maybe starting later in the summer or maybe right away, depending on what the guidelines are. But a, a full day, every day option is looking really difficult right now. And to launch that, we'd need to get hiring and training right around June first, so. We're, we're going to ask you to make a decision on that at your next meeting with the best available information at that time. Uh, questions on that?
No.
Nope.
No, Courtney just continues to do a great job.
Yeah, they're, they're really, uh, they're, the, the two of them have really been trying to keep up and, and follow the bouncing balls, um. They're, they're just as anxious to start the program as everybody is to have it, but, um, all stuck. Uh, and I think, uh, you're going to hear from me plenty on financial stuff. I think, I think that's it for this portion.
Um, review of the action items?
I think everything, uh, for the Route Four property, didn't it?
Right. That's something I recall, but I don't know if there was anything else, or if there was, we've made notes about.
Uh, our, according to the minutes, our action items were um, to review the, uh, Evans' payment request. And um, and then Chris obviously got us the Route Four information. And then we're going to look into the idea of purchasing a drone to find lost hikers. I think that's.
Yeah, the, uh, the fire chief was, uh, was not really. Yeah, the, uh, the fire chief was, uh, was not really interested in that. That's as far as I got on that so far.
Yeah, they are kind of pricey. I, I looked into them and, and I would, right now, I would put that in the category of nice to have, but not necessary. Just my opinion on that.
No, I agree with you on that one too.
Yep, that's fine.
Did everyone have a chance to review the Evans abatement?
I have not.
I have.
Yeah, I did.
I did.
Well, those three, you wanna talk about it?
Are we, are we ready to move on to assessing? I think that, that was it for action items, right? Yeah.
So, my only, my only concern about that is that John's the one that has the most assessing experience out of all of us.
We're talking about the Evans abatement, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, I mean, there's more things on the assessing approvals to go through, so.
Right.
I just didn't know, I'm, I mean, I looked over something, but I didn't go over everything. I'm trying to get out of the screen. Uh, one second, please.
Want me to put it up on the screen?
I think you can leave the agenda up, Tony.
Okay.
So how do you wanna go through all the, um, all the assessing things, um, one by one, or?
Didn't we do a blanket approval last time?
Thought we did, but.
Yeah, the only, the only, uh, I mean, you, you can do whatever you want, but the, um, the only things we, we need really individual votes on are the Evans abatement that carried over from last time. The rest of it you can do in one.
Why can't I see Evans abatement anywhere?
Um, came in like before last meeting, in the package for the last meeting, from Kelly.
Oh, you know, I might have to get something totally.
Came in on April 30th. April 30th, about 4:00 in the afternoon. See it?
Uh, one second. Uh, hello, town, I see two abatements, Evans abatement, sorry, got it. This is from a while ago. I probably already read this, just didn't remember it, sorry.
All right, well, you wanna take care of the other ones first? I think
Yeah.
Is, should, uh, should we do the veterans' tax credits and the?
Oh, I know this, this is on, on, near your house, Donna, sorry.
Yeah.
Clears it up a little when you start remembering locations, and you do.
Okay, so Chris, um, should we do one motion to approve the tax credits for the five? I think there's only five here, four here.
Four.
Yeah, you could just, you could just approve the credits and exemptions and tents listed on the agenda.
Okay.
Just phrase it like that, uh, and we'll have enough.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the select board approve the veterans' credit uh, requests as listed on the agenda and also the intent to cut requests, uh, as specified on the agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore. And then we are passed.
So, John.
So I'm having a little trouble finding what I'm looking for on my computer, 'cause I have too many.
Too much clutter?
Oh, yeah. I, I've read the whole thing about the Evans abatement, if you wanna go back to that. Does anybody have any questions on it, or?
I, I read through it, um, you know, carefully, in detail. It was pretty long.
Yes.
But I am inclined to, um, accept Avatar's recommendation.
I am as well, Tony.
I agree.
I do too. All right, since we're.
So that would be a motion to deny?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that the select board deny the abatement requests for the Evans properties, uh, map 70 lot 20. Map 70 lot 33. And also not listed, but map 70 lot 31.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore. Motion passes. All right. So we're all finished with the assessing part? The paperwork Chris sent out about cash flow, do you wanna go over that, Chris?
Well, um, so as we approach, uh, the, uh, first issue tax bill, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have a warrant. If you haven't seen a warrant from Kelly today, you'll see it tomorrow. We're gonna ask you to sign that. We're about to issue tax bills. They'll be due late June, early July. We have to think about our operating cash, um, depending on, on how much, uh, leakage we have in, uh, property tax collections. We, uh, we always get cash poor uh, just before particularly the second issue tax bill, uh, in October and November. Um, never so poor that we really worry about it, but this year, uh, we, we really need to, uh, we need to think through it. Right now, um.
Do you really think that there's going to be? You know, a lot of people, I, I mean, again, I guess, I don't ask everybody this question on how they pay their taxes, but it seems to like most new homeowners and most people like that, or it's all built into their, their mortgage.
Yeah, about 60% of our, our bills are paid by the mortgage servicer, so, uh, uh, you know, about of the total due, not of the, not 60% of the homes, but 60% of the dollars are paid through escrow. So if you assume that the, that the mortgage service companies are, are healthy, uh, and actually have the money that they've collected from everyone, uh, we, we can assume that we'll get the vast majority of that 60%, if not all of it, so. That, uh, is one reason for some optimism anyway. Right now, outside of property taxes, every other revenue stream that, that we, you know, we don't call it taxes, but fees and other uh, other charges that people have to pay to the town, we're collecting at about 80% of the rate we did last year. April was really quiet. Um, the, the biggest number there is motor vehicle registrations, uh, but you see it across all kinds of things, uh, in smaller dollars. So, um, running about 80% on non-property tax revenue. Last year, uh, by August, we had collected, uh, 92% of our property tax revenue, so uh, we, we don't have generally a, a big problem with unpaid taxes, you know, we never, we've never been high on that list. We're, you know, in a good year, we'll collect 92, 93, 94% relatively quickly, so. So we took a, just the, the worst possible case scenario that we thought was realistic and said, all right, if we collect 70% of what we did last year, uh, what would that do to us? That's about the, the downward limit of what we can afford without, uh, running out of cash, probably. There are a lot of unknowns, um, and you see some of those, uh, listed there. The, working in our favor, safety valves for us on cash flow are, if we do collect better than than we guessed, uh, you know, obviously that's, that's just straight cash. Last year, we had appropriations to our capital reserve funds, but, uh, we haven't had a town meeting yet, so we don't have those appropriations. The tax rate will reflect a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, like, you know, for the highway truck fund and the, uh, fire truck fund and all those things. We don't have to make those deposits when we're cash poor, so. Um, we've got some cushion there. We'll have some inbound state and federal money. Um, we have play within our operating budget. We're talking with the superintendent and the SEU finance person tomorrow to see what kind of uh, play they have. Their fiscal year ends in July. So any, anything coming back to us, uh, could affect the, the, the payout to the school, uh, for the second half of the year. So we, we've got a lot of, uh, a lot of things that can make the picture better. Not much in the way of downside risk. Uh, so overall, I think we're, we're gonna be okay. We, um, if something goes wrong and, and, uh, things get really bad between now and August, we'll reevaluate and, um, and have to look at a tax anticipation note, uh, in October and November, uh, to get us through for the short term, but, uh, at this point, we feel like we're gonna be okay. But it is something we have to keep an eye on, so.
This is very helpful, Chris. Thank you for this.
Spilling over, if you have no other cash flow questions, I wanna just spill over into some other budget stuff. If that's okay.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
So we, uh, we're still scheduled for town meeting at the end of June. Um, we'll have, uh, two more meetings, uh, at least, uh, between now and then to discuss how you wanna approach the budget there. Really, you, you won't have a whole lot of flexibility, uh, other than suggesting amendments. It's, uh, it is what it is. It's baked, it's approved, it's, uh, approved by the budget committee, it's on the warrant. So, uh, we'll have to figure out what your approach is, uh, coming into that meeting. We didn't talk about the mechanics of a meeting, but assuming that we have a meeting, uh, that looks anything like a regular town meeting. I don't know if there's anything you want us to achieve between now and then, uh, anything you wanna revise or, or think differently about. No, we're gonna have to talk about the road projects. Uh, Ledge Farm is coming in. It's getting more and more complicated the more engineering we do on it. Um, we've got last year's work uh, repairs figured out. Those are coming in about where we expected, but the rest is considerably more complicated. What we learned about how the ground behaves in the winter, uh, this year uh, really changed some of the thinking about how to approach the remainder of the project, so. Um, I'm still waiting to see the cost estimates on it, but I, I think it's going to be out of reach for 2020 to finish the whole thing. The numbers are, are gonna get bigger. So we're gonna have to change, uh, change plans somehow. Uh, we're gonna have that project be shovel-ready if Congress comes through with a crazy stimulus package. Uh, but we may, uh, two weeks from now, come back and say we need to, we need to take a different approach with our, uh, highway projects this year. We had on the warrant 300,000 for that, and I don't know if, uh, if you're of a mind to come out of town meeting with lower appropriations than we uh, than we originally planned to, given the financial and economic conditions, but we should have that conversation sooner rather than later if you are of a mind to try and do something different than what we proposed for March. Whether it's road project-related or capital reserve-related or operating related, um, you know, I, I don't know if there's anything on your minds about that, but we only have a couple of meetings before we're supposed to have a town meeting, so. I'd welcome your thoughts on that, too.
If we, um, if we decided to suspend our capital reserve appropriations just for this year, should we pair that with bumping the CIP plan back one year to cushion that?
Yeah, we, we, we typically do the CIP in the fall, uh, if the reserve account balances change now and then, uh, we would just, uh, re, we'd rethink the CIP. Yeah.
So Chris, would the, would the action that you'd be asking the board for would be to, you know, we've, we've all got the town reports that were created already, to go back, review the budget, the warrant articles, and come back to the next meeting with any questions or alternative thoughts that the board might have?
Yeah, I think the, the, if you, if you just, even between now and the next meeting, if you can share with me your big-picture thoughts, um, you know, do, do you, uh, do, do you want to save money in some way, shape, or form? This year, at the expense of future stuff, or at the expense of this year? I don't know, in some towns, they're really trying hard to, um, reduce the budget to reduce the tax impact. We, in, in kind of a strange way, this year, our operating budget was really pretty vanilla. We didn't have a lot of one-offs and purchases and things, and um, there's nothing in the warrant that's really mission-critical for us, which is one of the reasons we've been able to take our time with town meeting, but you know, just what, what direction do you wanna go in as we head into town meeting? Any, any feedback on that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd certainly wanna take a look at the, our capital reserve appropriations. I mean, we did in, I think, we increased some of them from previous years. But, you know, we gotta make sure that if we're gonna go that route, that we're not bumping back anything critical in the CIP plan that would, in a way, that would cause more harm than good. We're gonna have to look at both sides of that coin.
But we could, I mean, we still have the option of using some of the general fund to offset tax rate. Right? So that we could, you know, invest, you know, continue the investment, you know, the savings as, as we've laid out, but then we could still, if we wanted to or needed to, we could use some of the general fund to offset the tax rate, which generally I'm not in favor of. But, if, you know, these are extraordinary times, so it may be something we need to look at.
You got a point there. It is the rainy day fund, and I can't imagine it being any worse than it is right now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, uh, if, if you were, uh, the, an approach that I would suggest is that, first of all, think about using uh, fund balance to offset the drop in revenues that we're experiencing on non-property tax
Yeah.
stuff. That is one way you can use the rainy day fund to keep the tax rate from jumping. It is really a one, a one-off kind of thing, and, you know, you get yourself in trouble dipping into the fund balance for things that have to repeat, um, but this is a case where, you know, you might be able to go to town meeting and say, But this is a case where, you know, you might be able to go to town meeting and say, we're going to make the revenue side whole, so there's no surprise in the tax rate. What you'll be doing in September is projecting your full year's revenue. And if your full year revenue isn't what you thought it was going to be, then that's going to go right to the tax rate.
Yep.
That's a really good use of fund balance and would probably put some voters' minds at ease that, you know, we're not going to see a spike just because of that.
And Chris, you're not concerned about, you know, reducing our operating cash by doing that? Like, especially looking ahead to October, November?
No, that's more a, that's more a balance sheet kind of transaction than it is a cash transaction. So we just got through the cash flow. Where the impact of using the fund balance to offset taxes wouldn't really be felt until December, January, and future years. So yes, you have to think about that, but I think we've got enough cushion at this point that that's not going to be a factor.
And if we had to come up with a number for tapping into that fund balance, would we simply appropriate the amount that our revenue has fallen short?
Yeah, you could take that approach early in the tax rate setting. You could say, use the fund balance to offset any revenue shortfall outside of property taxes, you know, all the other revenue. You can do that right from the start, and you'd know what that number was, and then you wouldn't feel it in the tax rate.
So on your cash flow chart, you have the current rate of collection at eighty percent of 2019 for non-property tax revenues.
Yep.
Is there a hard number for that?
Yeah, if you go to the next page there, let me see.
Okay, I'm looking at it, yeah.
So the total from taxes is property taxes. Everything else is the remaining revenue. Fees, building permits, clerks, state departments, all those added together is everything else. So, you know, it's, what is that, a million and a half a year, maybe, something like that? That's from memory. I'm not looking at the chart here to get that number, but.
Four point seven million and change from taxes, total revenues, five million.
Yeah, I'm looking at it down at the bottom, right. All right, I got you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and you can see that, you know, the big, the number that matters is the town clerk and the motor vehicle registrations and the state grants. If the legislature pulls back on their promises from the last budget, then we're going to have a hole. If they leave it alone, then we're going to be fine with that big number. You know, that's a six-figure number. So really, what we're talking about is motor vehicle stuff and some recycling revenue and building permits and things like that. That's the hole that you'd be filling right from the start with fund balance in that scenario.
Okay, that makes sense. As far as the mechanics of making any changes for town meeting, does it make the most sense to just amend on the floor?
It's really your only option at this point.
Yeah. That's right, because we can't go back and redo the warrants.
Right. And I would also plant the seed that, it seems rather likely that the SB two petition that's on the warrant, if we ever have a town meeting, I think that's probably going to pass. You may disagree with me, but having been through what we're going through right now, I can't imagine anybody's going to, I can't imagine that a huge percentage of the population is going to vote no on SB two. If we do go to SB two, the budget that we approve this year becomes the default budget for next year. And we could, so I would be hesitant to take anything out of the operating budget this year if we can afford it, because the default budget next year is going to be too low. And we could be setting ourselves up for a challenge in 21 if we think we're just making short-term adjustments to the operating budget.
We could end up with a delayed tax spike.
Or if the budget doesn't pass under SB two, you could end up with a dramatically reduced operating budget next March.
Right.
Is that clear? Everybody see where I'm heading with that?
Yeah.
So certainly, it's up to you and the voters, but that is a worry, anyway. And I think that's it on the finance front, unless you have questions or concerns about anything else. You saw the expense numbers last time around. Nothing surprising there. We're still holding one position in highway vacant. Still haven't bought a police cruiser. You know, we're pulling back where it makes sense to pull back, but not dramatically. But, hey, I don't have any more questions.
Anybody else have any questions on this?
Not me.
Nope.
Did we lose Tyler?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Yo, is he here?
Oh, yeah, he's there.
He was here for the whole thing, but I got my cable up and running again now on my internet, whatever the hell it is.
Let's go to Section B, the Route Four property disposition.
Okay, more of me. You asked me to follow up on a few things after your last meeting, and I spent way too much time on the phone with our attorneys last week. One thing that I, that we probably would have benefited from last time is our attorney's recommendation that the governor's order on foreclosures applies to this property and that we should not plan on selling this until that order is lifted. Maybe not a big deal, but this is one of those things that could go on for a while. So that kind of sits over the top of anything else we talk about.
So why does it apply to this if the foreclosure was done so long ago and we basically sat out that three-year period?
That's the part that baffles me, too.
It's not a foreclosure. It's a foreclosure action that falls under other applicable laws. The spirit of the law is to not take anybody's property away for failure to pay their mortgage or taxes. And the sale is a final step in that process. We could fight that in court, or somebody could challenge us, but this one, from our attorney's perspective, was pretty much a slam dunk. You can't do that.
Okay. So it's a tabled issue for now?
A final transaction would be. It's not to say that you can't keep discussing it. You can do everything right up to the closing, which, you know, if you decided you wanted to put it on the market, you could do that. But you'd obviously be doing it with the, having to disclose the fact that you're trying to sell it, but you can't sell it until you don't know when. So this doesn't have to stop you from doing work on it. It just means that you can't close a sale while that order is. So that sits over everything. And then a couple of other things that you asked me to follow through on. One is leasing the property. So we're still on the, we're still on the potential challenge to us reducing, making the fire owner whole. That is the, that's the issue that sits over this whole thing. Leasing would be particularly complicated in that regard and it has value at the end of a lease. And if you have to argue about what the value of that lease is at twenty years from now, it gets really hard to defend whatever you do.
Well, this information provided us here was a good read for today. And I think, obviously, if we're going to make a decision on this, we should have our five-member board doing it. So when Ben gets back, have him. But I think we should just actually make a decision on where we're going to go. You know, and just put out your opinions. You know, I'm not in favor of leasing. I'm in favor of selling. You know, with a restriction on groundwater, and that's basically how I feel like leaving it. But, you know, since we're not at the point of making that, unless anybody else wants to weigh in on their opinion, you know. But, you know, when the time comes and this order gets lifted and we are ready, we should have a plan of action of we're going to sell or, you know, put a covenant on there for selling it with this stipulation or no stipulation. That's what I've been thinking about this whole time. I think about Route Four.
I still remain in favor of selling it as well.
I do, too, this Tyler.
So not that we're going to make a call on that tonight, because I don't think it's fair not to have Ben's idea on there. But, you know, I guess from June first, we're going to find out a lot of things of what's going on with the state and restrict, you know. I don't know if this will be lifted or if this is going to be a six-month thing where he's going to keep it going for us to put an action on there. But I'd rather, if we do decide on an action on this, in my opinion, that we don't have stipulations involved, you know, of putting it up for sale than saying, well, you know, we go in and we just go in and get it done.
Well, I think the other part of the question is that we had asked Chris to get the language, design language, so we could assess whether or not we felt that that language offered proper protection from things like groundwater removals. So did you guys take a look at that as well?
Yeah, I did. I still think putting a covenant on the property, I know there's risk to that, too. But, you know, the zoning laws can change. But if you put a covenant on the property such that, you know, for all time, whoever owns that land can't drill it, no matter what the zoning laws change into, I think that gives us the most comprehensive protection against another USA Springs coming in. Of course, it, you know, it puts us at risk in other ways. You know, if the guy says that reduced the value of the land, but, you know, we could all just as easily argue that that reduced the value of the land, even if it exists, happened years ago when we passed the law to restrict groundwater extraction and not now, right? So.
Well, yeah, there's a good question on that, too. Again, I mean, this subject's going to go on for a bit, so we have plenty of time to talk about it. We don't want to feel like going diving into it tonight. But, you know, if we already have zoning issues that say no large, you know, water extraction in our town, this obviously piece of property is going to meet that same requirement. So again, putting us, again, I don't know, putting us something on there. You know, I don't think it's going to deter anything because it's already in our ordinance, but... I don't know where you guys want to go on this for tonight, or if it's something that we'll just talk about, continue talking about it till we actually get to a point where we can sell it. Since it seems like that's the, you know, from everybody here at night kind of mentioning selling is the way we're going to want to go. Leasing, it's probably not going to happen. Unless some miracle happens with that, but.
I still wouldn't mind keeping that on the table. You know, I mean, that's our commercial district. So if we've got any, you know, viable opportunity to make that property productive for the town beyond property taxes, you know, I don't think we should let that go, you know, so easily.
I'm not saying let it go easy, but, you know, we got to put a time restraint. In my opinion, we got to put a time restraint on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's.
We don't want to hold on to this forever.
Exactly. If nothing's coming up that's viable in the next six months, you know, the move to sell, I think, is the way we should go. You know, but if something came up in the next six months, sure, we could entertain that. I'd be willing to entertain that.
I'd be concerned about the risk.
Right.
You know, definitely concerned about the risk, and God knows, we don't need another legal battle in this town, right?
No. But, any more on that right now from anybody?
No.
Nope.
Chris, you got anything to say, or?
Nope. We will keep plugging away. I guess what I hear from you is don't spend a whole lot of time right now chasing down these rabbit holes. Is that?
Well, I think we're on a, selling is going to be our goal, again, unless something comes up, you know, from what everybody just said. So I wouldn't put too much more unless there's a legal question on how we're going to sell it, would be the only, as you mentioned there about appraised values and stuff like that. Just getting that set, but. Excuse me.
Yeah, I did hear from the appraiser that did the last one. There really is no update. He would give us a bit of a discount, but it'd be a few thousand bucks to get an appraisal done. In talking with counsel, it sounded like if you're going to go through that, you should probably do it with somebody who's got a lot of credibility around the stuff that you might get sued about. Meaning, find somebody that knows the water business and all that stuff, which would turn into a much more complex appraisal process, so.
And more expensive.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want that.
Okay. All right, well, we'll keep chipping at these. And then when the five of you are here, as we get more clarity on the timing of the governor's order, then we'll come back to it full steam. If we're done with that, one thing on the agenda I wrote to you about with a collection of housekeeping stuff, but I forgot to put it on the agenda. You all have that memo about tax collection and grants and things. Does that ring a bell?
Yep.
This one? COVID financial housekeeping?
Yes. Yeah, if you have any questions about any of that or want to talk through any of it, I'd appreciate your votes on those three motions at some point this evening.
Is that something you want us to do tonight?
I would love it if you would do that.
Okay. Everybody get to read this already?
I did.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Just glancing over it again real quick. Yeah, I didn't have.
Before we go to actually making motions on this, if we could go through it. Anybody have any questions on the tax collection?
Nope.
No.
Nope. Okay. Ready for a motion on tax collection?
All right, I'll make a motion that the Select Board hereby waives all tax collectors' deeds through the expiration or rescission of the Governor's Executive Order Number Four related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll second.
Roll call.
I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
I, Tyler Eaton.
I, John Warren. Motion passes for now.
Okay, and I'll also make a motion that pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 31:95-B and 21-P:43, the Select Board authorizes the acceptance of any and all federal or state grants related to the COVID-19 emergency response, including, but not limited, to the CARES Act and Family Medical Leave Act.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
I, Tyler Eaton.
I, John Warren.
Okay, and finally, I'll make a motion that the Select Board authorize distribution of a first responder stipend
Okay, and finally, I'll make a motion that the Select Board authorize distribution of a first responder stipend program funds to all eligible employees and call firefighters. Should that say on-call firefighters?
No.
Nope. They're called call firefighters.
Okay, okay. So to all eligible employees and call firefighters on a monthly basis for the duration of the grant program.
I'll second.
One question on this before we go. This 300 bucks, is it coming, it's coming from the state?
Yeah, we pay it. They reimburse us.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second that.
No, okay. Roll call.
I, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Warren. Motion passes for nothing.
Okay, that's it for motions.
All right. Do we have any appointments or anything?
No, I do need a brief non-public under A, though.
Okay. Is there anybody that's online with us that has any questions for the board? I can't see that, Tyler. I don't know if you can, Tony.
Yeah, there's one person online. I don't know. Here, I want to unmute.
It shows on the bottom like somebody had a question. Does it? I can't see that.
Oh, wait, the chat window. Let me look.
Yeah.
I think that's Chief Vailchuk's phone. There's no hiding, chief.
Nope, there's nobody that requested, no chats or nothing. Okay, so we're off with that.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Who was that?
Nothing.
Okay.
Well, seeing nobody has any questions from the audience, I guess we will move on to going to non-public per RSA 91-A3 2-A.
Yeah, we got to make a motion on that.
Oh, sorry.
So I'll make a motion that the Select Board enter non-public session per RSA 91-A:3, Section 2A. Is that what you said, Chris?
Yes.
2A.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
I, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Warren. We are now going into non-public.
And we'll be closing the meeting after we come out of non-public.